It being seven o'clock, I heard by call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is citizen comment, there being no citizens in the council chambers. It appears we've satisfied this element of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the November 14, 2016 Planning Commission Meeting minutes. I think it was November 15. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any motions to revise? All in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstaining, raise your hand and say abstain. There being none, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan. I invite to the presentation table the city staff and its consultants.
Good evening, Planning Commission.
Welcome.
So, I guess tonight we're seeing if you are ready to move forward with your recommendation on the housing strategy to the council. And I want to kind of have a checking with the Planning Commission that you feel this is the best recommendation that you can make to the council. If you have concerns about that, then let's discuss those before the recommendation goes forward. Thank you.
All right. Concerns? Okay. I don't know if anybody looked at, I think at least Mike looked at, the email that I sent out. So those are some concerns that I had. Some are concerns, some are part of how are we going to make an oral presentation to the council? As you know, when we're preparing an oral presentation, I encourage everybody to play some role in the presentation. So if there's something on that list or something else that you think should be orally presented that you would like to present, let me know. But I did, in fact, have those concerns that are in there, and I would be either presenting those concerns, or we could write something, or both. But I think one option, and I brought up last week, you know, what our timetable was. And if the staff is uncomfortable presenting it with those concerns, then perhaps we could extend this timetable for this project and address some of those concerns. I know we talked about in July whether we should have multiple perspectives on this issue. It's a very controversial issue. Other cities have had multiple sectors of this issue consult or render opinion or participate in that. So we raised that in July. I know we're on a tight schedule. We went over by some months what we expected on wireless communications, so that gave us less time to address this very controversial issue. So maybe we need more time, so I invite any comments or thoughts about that. My thought would be, if staff's uncomfortable presenting it with my concerns, then let's take more time and get it right. Because I don't want to make you uncomfortable, but go ahead.
Well, I don't think it's a question making me feel uncomfortable. I think the way that your comments are phrased, and particularly comments four through 11, it's sort of putting caveats on that recommendation. And that is never a good thing to, if you're putting, here's a recommendation with caveats. I don't necessarily agree with those caveats that you've outlined in four through 11. So again, I'd be interested to hear if that's more of a general consensus from the commission as a whole, that those caveats that you presented here represent the commission's concerns.
Right. I agree. Comments? Go ahead, Mike.
You know, at first and second read of this, I didn't really see them as caveats or concerns. They didn't come across that way to me. They came across as observations or clarifications, but I didn't see where they contradicted any of the words or necessarily none of them. I misread it, or if it needs further discussion to kind of unearth that for my benefit, that would be great. And then kind of as a follow-up question, do you think the points you've outlined here speak to our priorities and our matrix, or to the context we set for that matrix in the government?
I would...
So, you know, it could be a wordsmithing exercise for us, right?
Right.
Because I think that's still presented to us as draft.
Right. So I'd have to say both. It obviously is context, but we've had Arch as the sole presenter on this issue. We don't know what else is out there, or we don't know what the other sectors of this issue would say about it. So I can't say that this is the definitive summary, or our recommendations are definitive, because I think there are sectors of this issue, particularly the private sector, which does the investing and construction of housing, would have to appear, present, and give us their side of it before I could say it's definitive.
I think we did give you the, I think it was in July, we gave you a summary of the outreach efforts that Arch had done to the different sectors, to the housing sector, to the developer section, so, because they had done that outreach effort before they came forward with the strategies for the housing strategy plan. So it's not that they're presenting a one-sided approach, they're presenting a comprehensive look at what they've heard from those different parties. And as we said, Arch is essentially working for us as a housing planner for the city. So I, that's why I kind of don't look at this as Arch being biased or a consultant just representing affordable housing. They are our housing planner, and they did present what they'd heard from these variety of different sources.
Right.
And the pros and cons on each strategy.
Yeah. So, Carol, if you had your hand up, so go ahead. I just think that, you know, your four through 11 really does direct its attention
to Arch, and all along the way, we have actually requested information from Arch, which Arch provided for us as we looked at the matrix. So when we present this information, you know, whatever our timeline is, when we present it, I think it would be a much cleaner presentation if we look at the things that might be still needing some work, and again, the draft that was provided for us. I'd like to recommend that we just go through it page by page, and maybe we can insert or highlight the places in that draft that you still feel uncomfortable about.
Well, my concern is, as I said, I don't know if the draft or the matrix is all sides of this issue. So we could go through it, but we're still basing it on what we've been told from Arch. And so when this came up back in July, and I think it may have come up again in August, and there was Arch saying, oh, well, we survey and we talk to different sectors of this, so we'll give you both sides. And that was true to an extent. There were times when we said, well, what's the other side? And they come up with something. But I felt like, and there were times when I played the devil's advocate, say, well, here's something else, or here's something else. In fact, we had one occasion, and I think it was serendipity, that the Rental Housing Association happened to notice there was a meeting on this, and they sent somebody out here. I thought he was a very different perspective than what Arch had given us, which isn't to discredit Arch. I hear you. I know you've got an essential role to play in this discussion, but I think other sectors do too.
Can I speak to that comment?
I want, just to add one more thing, and of course you can, but I think at the time I had said and referenced how Seattle had addressed this issue. And this is probably the most controversial issue. It's on the shortlist, but it's not the most controversial issue in the area. And Seattle had formed this committee called the Hala Committee, Housing Affordability, Livability, and something. It had like 25, 30 people on it from different sectors of the housing issue. It had tenants, it had builders, it had lawyers. And I think at the time I referenced that, and I said, if all we needed were Arch, if all Seattle needed were Arch, they just hired Arch. They wouldn't have put 25 people on a panel to discuss it over a year that they discussed it. So my concern is, just, you know, Arch can make its best efforts to say, well, we're speaking for this end sector or that sector, but they're still filtering it. And we're not getting Q and A or, you know, another element of that. We're assuming that Arch is covering all their bases. I would much rather have a direct conversation with the building industry, or the lending industry, or the housing industry, the landlord-tenant trade group, or something like that, before I would say to the council, this looks at the issue from all sides. So that's my concern. Go ahead, Arthur, you wanted to comment too.
Yeah, I think...
Okay, okay. I think that, going back to your example, we did use all, we gave you all the literature provided to the city of Redmond from both sides with no filtering whatsoever. And then, second, a difference between your task and what we did, because we have many smaller jurisdictions, is we did, as Debbie said, bring together pretty much the same cross-section, and we provided you the information they provided us, again, not filtered per se, as in-depth as Hala, no.
I'm sorry, is it what?
Not as in-depth as Hala, because as you said, Hala went on free, but we took the same issues, we did a lot of these exercises as an initial input. One of the big differences between Hala and what the exercise you're doing here is in Hala, they found the four or five things, and they came up with the solutions for those four. They said what funding sources, what land use neighborhoods, what land use changes should be made. What the exercise you've been trying to do is prioritize what things felt appropriate for your city, then spend the next two years going into more detail, and then as you do each one of those issues, you would of course bring in the experts on each of those issues per se. Now, I'm not saying you can't go back and go do that, but there's a little bit different product that you're providing than the Hala. And just also to be clear, the whole group, I think we said it, but I just want to be clear, Arch is not an independent organization. Arch is a creation, it's an inter-local agency created by the cities of East King County. I serve to the city managers and the city councils of the 14 cities. I do not serve nonprofits, I do not serve for-profits, I do not serve any other sector. The only sector I serve are the city governments that I work for directly. So I just want to make sure that's clear to the group, given those comments. But this is your product. We've been trying to get you the information you've requested, so, but in the end, it's your product. So we're all, you know, we've tried to get it to this point for you. If it's not the right materials through staff, we'll take whatever direction is needed to help you get to the point you need to get to.
Okay. Anybody else? So I think what staff needs is direction. Do we, what do we do with the concerns I've raised? I don't know if other people share those concerns. I do recall there being people agreeing with those concerns about one perspective from Arch back in July, back in August. I still have those concerns. So we can present it with the concerns, you can vote to present it without the concerns, you could vote to extend the time that we spend on this so that people from other perspectives could come in and comment.
I might just add a little bit. I think that if the commission agrees that Arch has provided not, or provided inadequate information, Arch and staff, since we work together, we review everything that Arch prepares. If you feel that we have provided you inadequate information, and therefore you would be taking forward a recommendation to the city council that says, here's our strategy plan, but Arch was kind of biased, and we don't really buy into the recommendation, then what we want to do is move in a different direction, which is to say, could there, are you interested in having other groups come before you that can develop or present different strategies? And this goes to Arthur's point, which is that you are not making the regulatory decisions. You are saying, here are those intriguing strategies that we want to pursue. And if you think extending the project and getting more people in to maybe come up with more strategies would be useful, that's kind of the question that's before you with these points.
Well, and to comment on the strategies that we've looked at.
So you think that prioritization would change?
Maybe. I don't know. I'd like to hear from them.
Okay. So I guess we need to hear from the commissioners, all of the commissioners.
Want to go take, kind of poll it, go one at a time? If anybody wants to? That's what I'm going to do. This is how you choose volunteers, right? I'm going to start down here, and then I'll go that way, and we'll kind of mix it up that way. So I'll start with Mike. What do you think?
I'm trying to think through the scenarios of additional sources coming in and providing this information. I'm having a hard time figuring out how we frame that. I'm going to pass.
Okay. Carol?
Well, I think that the work we've done does fulfill what the council requested of us and of city staff, and that is just to go through and prioritize. We didn't start with a blank slate and go out, and, you know, that's why we had Arch as our resource. I think we had some areas that we can't know all the information, just to prioritize a strategy, to pass up to council, that really becomes their responsibility. And I think how I would view it is being able to make it much simpler than you are, and that is that we are creating a strategy plan. It isn't all-inclusive, it's just, at this moment in time, this is what we believe, based on the information we've received, the priorities of this community are now. We do know that, you know, the city of Seattle, Bellevue, you know, we're kind of in the middle of those two big, huge, growing populations. And we're somewhat aware of the criteria that would move these strategies one way or the other. And I don't view it as a, now we're done, and we're going to pass this up to council in two or three, even in six months, I don't think they'll have a complete pathway that they know they're going to go, but they'll at least have a priority of what to start with, and they'll continue to gather information. I don't think that it's, we are not in a vacuum. We can continue to add to the information that's available to us now. What I hear you saying, Doug, is that you don't feel comfortable passing the prioritized strategies that we've worked on up to council, because you seem to think that there's some strategy we may have missed that would go to the front of the line. Could you elaborate on that a little?
And I don't know is the point. I'm fine presenting all this to the council as is. I'm okay with the four highest priority items that we selected. I just don't know if there are alternatives. I don't know if the housing industry would have criticisms of them or other perspectives on them.
Right.
So what I've just said is, we could pass it on. I'd like to also pass on my concerns. Now, they could ignore it, they could say, oh, well, maybe we should do, spend more time on it, that kind of thing. But it's concerns and it's context, and I think the memo that we got had a little context, but these are points, and in fact, I mentioned them at the last meeting, when I said, well, in addition to what they present, let's talk about at the next meeting what we should present. And I did mention, you know, where does Kenmore fit into this whole affordable housing issue? Is it, how severe is the problem in Kenmore? What is the context? You know, why is housing appreciated so much? Why have we chosen those four? You know, have we, looking at the market reaction to what our policies might be, are we giving them incentives? Are we deterring them from investing? That kind of thing. So that's what I wrote this. I'm happy to have this accompany whatever we give them, if that's where people want to go. But I feel myself reluctant to give them without something like this and say, this is a complete product. And it's not to say that Arch was inadequate, the word Lori used, it's to say it's insufficient to take one viewpoint. And Arch may serve 14, 15 cities, that's great, but it serves it from the affordable housing perspective. I mean, I think your role is to try and help cities produce more affordable housing, and I'd like to hear from the other sectors in this issue.
What I do believe, if you could instruct us a little bit, staff, if we did pass this package up to council, wouldn't they be obligated if they were getting close to creating some kind of policy, at least letting the public know and giving them input on that? Go ahead.
So the purpose of the strategy would be that the plan would go forward, and the council would look at the prioritization recommendation, and they would determine whether they agreed with the prioritization, and if so, then the assumption is that they would assign presumably the highest priority action back to the Planning Commission.
Right.
And then that would be the point where we'd be fleshing out pros, cons, taking public input, all of those things to try to determine whether or not the strategy, now that we've really studied it, is or is not appropriate. I think we've said all along that moving a strategy forward, that's why we chose the word intriguing, it's something that we may be interested in, but we're certainly not committing to at this point.
Okay. So how I view it is, we've done some homework and looked at some of the information that is available to us at this point, and we're engaging in a conversation with council with some kind, something for them to talk about. And I understand why you want to put some points to consider in there too, and I don't think that's a detriment to the council. You're right, they could just go like this.
Yeah.
And, you know, then we'd get our homework when they send something back to us to work on. So I think the way to move forward tonight, if I could make a suggestion...
Polling.
Because, you know, I think we do need to move forward, and if there's any reluctance on the other council members' part, this would be a great time to put your two cents worth in.
All right. Thanks, Carol. We'll go to Dennis.
From my perspective, I would agree with everyone that the council we've been receiving from Arch is not inadequate. It has been adequate. But I think to address your concerns, there needs to be some sort of statement and recognition that their focus, and I think the focus of our strategies so far have been on what are the other affiliated cities doing, and how will we fit those concepts into what we should do in the future. But we also recognize that housing is a much more complex issue than simply government programs, and that as we go forward, it would be our desire to include other industries and viewpoints, which may or may not change the priorities or the scope of the projects we're undergoing. I mean, I really do just look at it as that we're trying to get a stake in the ground, and this is where we started, but it's certainly not where we want to finish.
So you want some kind of statement, whether this is edited or edited is...
That's the way I was reading it. So I was thinking that would combine your commentaries sort of together, so that I, and with Mike, the concern of just listing these, I wasn't sure I really knew what you were trying to say.
I was trying to be objective and just say what we knew.
No, no, I understand that.
I don't want to get into too much opinion, but here's some facts that I had concerns about.
But that's why I was suggesting maybe some commentary that sort of explained where we're at and the other things we would like to do, because I agree with needing to expand our scope if we go further.
Okay. Thanks. Mike?
Well, I also had some discomfort as we're going through this and the information that we received from Arch, that in a lot of different consulting engagements that I don't recall at times in any of them where I didn't. So I find that, you know, particularly unusual. I think as we went through it, where I could at least identify concerns, I think they ended up being reflected in either the change in the recommendations, or there were adjustments made that made me feel comfortable that we were heard and they were fine. I guess, in this, hopefully not just repeating other people's thoughts, but I feel like this is, again, this is more of a starting place than a finishing place. If I thought that we were supposed to, or we were being asked to give the city council a list of recommendations prioritized about what they should be doing, and then they were going to launch off on that, I would be much more interested in having a lot more study. But I don't think that's what we were charged to do. So I feel pretty comfortable with what's here. Maybe to make that clearer, and make, I don't know about you, Doug, but it would make me more comfortable, if somewhere in here we were very clear with the city council about what we saw our work product was intended to be, which is this isn't an end-all, these are not recommendations, and maybe even list a couple of the things that I've heard, to talk about, about things we need the city council needs to do, or we would advise the city council that we didn't do these things, that we just saw that was outside of our scope. So for things like looking at additional expertise, looking across what the situation is around the surrounding communities, thinking about what, really, how does this housing recommendations or where we go forward fit in with the Kenmore strategic plan, that there's lots of these to be considered before you go any further along here. We don't have the time or the energy, or we're given the charge, to go into any of those things. So I'll end this by, a little tirade, by just saying, I think that I can support what's here already. I think it would be stronger if we could have some addendum, or maybe it's just a statement that comes from us, saying that this is very clearly, we saw our obligation here, our charge was to come up with, to take a look at what the potentials were out there. We called them, what are the intriguing things, to start the list that the city council would then have to do greater in-depth on, or charge somebody else, maybe us, again, to look at that in greater depth. But making it clear that we didn't see this as, we're not making recommendations. We're saying we looked at these, they seem to be, as far as we, so consistent with what we knew the city's objectives to be, and we prioritize them in that way, and so here you go.
Okay. Mark?
I agree with Mike, and he said it a lot more eloquently than I could. The one thing I would say is, sort of in addition, is that calling it a housing strategy plan, I think is actually kind of a misnomer. We're, this is sort of, as I have come to understand it, more of a menu of things we could, the city could possibly look at in the future with, as was said, no real solutions. And I feel like we've gotten enough information to at least present a menu to the council of priorities. Now, if there are concerns, I mean, certainly those could be incorporated in the draft, but I feel comfortable at this stage. No, I don't feel comfortable presenting a completed housing strategy plan to address affordable housing, but I think we've gotten enough breadth and depth of information to present this particular product to the council with the caveat that, yes, we need to make very clear that this is more or less a first step, so that's my view.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Well, I'm the novice here, and I'm a little, have a least understanding of the process, but from what I gather is, we have these recommendations to, these strategies that really intrigued us, right? And we're going to give that to the council to get more instruction from them to what to do with that? Is that what we're doing?
So the idea would be that the strategy plan would move forward to the council with your recommended priorities, and I think the use of the term menu is a good one. It would be a menu of things that they could consider, and then they would decide whether they agreed that some of the ideas that you have prioritized are ideas that they also would prioritize. And then from that point forward, they would assign items presumably back to the Planning Commission to say, okay, we all agree that this might be an interesting thing to study related to affordable housing, so now you guys study it, and then give us a recommendation on whether you think this is something we should do or we should not do. That's kind of the way it would play out.
Well, you know, in my mind, it seems like we would have to have more examples to show the council as far as these strategies, so that they can get a, because it's kind of obtuse in what is stated in, you know, our grid. At least for me, you know, I'd like to, you know, hear more examples of applying these different strategies.
Right. And we've talked with Mike and Arthur about the need, if it goes forward to the council... to the council, to include almost like an appendix that, that brings forward, you know, Arthur, each time we talked about a strategy, had examples and then pros and cons, so that it's a summary of the discussion that happened in front of the planning commission so that they would have sort of that background information to flesh it out a little bit about what this, what is this strategy.
Right, and then the council's going to tell us what they think is a good idea and do, for us to do more research on that and maybe have people come in, like Doug would probably want to see a builder come in here and say, hey, this is what I need, you know, to, to put a stake in the ground, so to speak.
So, trying to take some of the things I've heard, I think another component, I think the menu thing is a good way to characterize sort of this step. We have, I wish I almost brought this graphic I'm using tomorrow night in Bothell, because my job here is to help you get to a product the council has asked you to do. I don't have, I've done it different ways in different cities because different boards feel different ways. One of the dilemmas this group was delivered from the first get-go is the council says they want to deal with the direct strategies. I've never worked in a city where someone was asked to rank where they weren't given the full menu to rank, so part of the, what has to happen when we go back to council is we have to bring in that whole shaded section and, going back to your example of Hala, two-thirds of their work were in that shaded section.
Of Hala's work.
It's Hala work. The land use stuff actually dropped away almost immediately, which is what you focused on. And one of the reasons it dropped away is because the voices that were being heard were the professionals and not the neighbors. You brought the neighborhood, you brought the community perspective, you did your filtering from a community point of view, to some degree, and you brought in the professional perspective as well, but I'm, the point I'm trying to make now is that, to your question Scott, is that what would happen is if the commission did say, or the council said, okay, great, you've listed these three things here, we now have to filter in the two or three direct if they want to have any of those, and now say, now, given how much work capacity we have as a city, here are the three for this year to work on. And let's say one of them was, and I'm only going to give the example because we gave you the material and you got to see it, is, one of them is section eight discrimination, which isn't on your list, so it's not going to happen at this point, but I'm using it as an example. Then what would happen is that topic would be studied in-depth by whoever the council assigned it to, that presumably would be the planning commission. At the planning commission, everything you saw happen in Redmond that we gave you the documentation of would repeat itself here, because now you're working on one topic where the people you're reaching out to are focused on the topic that's been, hey, this community thinks this might be a fit for our community. So, what we were, what we had done earlier is, the list that we gave you was not Arch cities activities and strategies. It was a strategy list we developed by researching about 10 different lists that were from other cities' strategy plans around the country. They were from boilerplates that PSRC had developed, they were from boilerplates that a national group had developed. We just created a central list of everything we could find that every jurisdiction we could find had considered in strategy plans. It was not meant to be just an East King County list of things that had happened. So, anyway, but to your question, I think what I'm trying to get back to is, the level of detail that you saw in that information is the kind of thing that would happen, that's why we said in the first meeting, your job isn't to decide if ADUs will be changed, but rather, is ADUs, given the context of our community, something we think might be worth looking at sooner than later than other ideas? So, this is a relative ranking of things in the order that they should be considered because of the context of your community. That's, so, the caveats that I've heard here are all appropriate, I don't have any issues with those kind of caveats, but the question is, you being settled with whatever being forwarded that the message is clear enough that what you're forwarding, you're comfortable that it fits in the context of what you thought you were working on.
You okay Scott?
Yeah, I think that's a...
So, it sounds like we're, we want to move forward, that we want to have some kind of addendum to what the memo says, we want to express some degree of limits on what we're presenting. I don't know exactly what if any portion of this you want to put in there. I still have these concerns, so I'm not exactly sure how the, the appendix should look. So, this is, so this is my voice, I, you know, if you guys want to throw something out, go for it and we'll see where we can get.
Would you be willing to just come up with a, you know, general statement that highlights maybe three things that would direct the council to this list? You know, just saying, this is a huge topic, we did our best in hearing what the majority menu items that other municipalities deal with. We came up with the, these different sections and their prioritization because we do have, you know, pretty specific sections that came to us in this package, those haven't changed. But we did get to move around and prioritize what we felt our city needed to look at first. But then I can see how we want the council, which I think is funny in a way, because they wouldn't have given us this topic to look at if they didn't kind of already know this stuff, but if we want to reemphasize the fact that Seattle's going crazy, you know, Bellevue's going crazy, people don't have places that are affordable in some categories and just us as community members, we really do see how our city's changing. It's, it's really lucky that we have this kind of economy that's here and it is affecting our housing. Can we put together some kind of a, like, general statement? I would say even those top three things that you have on your list, we could wordsmith those together and that could be the opening paragraph of our addendum and then emphasize that though we received a lot of information from Arch, moving forward, if you, if you passed something back to us, we may want to explore other resources than just Arch and host some public meetings, just so the coun- council's aware that we've already thought about those things and they could say, oh yeah, that's a great idea, we'd like you to do that. But that, it would help frame them, help, help them see what our thought process was.
Okay, thanks for that. Anybody else on what we should, how we should modify this or what else you might want to produce?
Doug, as I look at your, your points and, and kind of addressing four through 11 as was brought up before, and I don't mean this to marginalize what you've written here in any way, but many of these read to me almost as appropriate as a footnote to, to the cover letter, right? When, when we introduce Arch in the cover memo as our consultant and supporter through this process, you know, a footnote might be, who is Arch? What, what is their organization? What, what is their mission statement, right? Four and five tend to go together, five and, six and seven tend to go together, eight and nine tend to go together, eight, eight through 10 actually. Is, is that an appropriate way to think about what you've drafted for, for several of these? Is that they call out, as a footnote might, key points about the things that we will ultimately stay in our, state in our cover memo?
Uh, I don't want to bury it.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm, I'm less comfortable with a footnote. I mean, I, I can kind of, I think where you and Carol are going, and I think, I think Mike is going there too, and Mark agreed with Mike, so I'm trying to synthesize here, is, let's generalize this a little bit, let's talk about where we got this information. Let's talk about the issue first, like you said, first three paragraphs, here's the context. I'd like to put in, hey, here's where Kenmore fits into this context, we're nothing like Seattle or Bellevue or Kirkland or something like, or, keep going. But, you know, it's an issue here, it's gone up a lot in the last four years, although I really wish we had 2015 or something more recent than 2013 numbers to go with. In any event, so, here's the context region-wide, here's the, here's where Kenmore fits into this. Here's where we see the project, this is what we thought we were charged with. Here's who informed us, it's Arch. Here's where Arch is coming from. You know, Arch works for these cities, East King County, gets paid by us, it advocates for affordable housing. I really would like, you know, a summary of what Arch does, so I'm not guessing on this and you can tell me exactly what roles you play in that context. I know you're an advocate, I know you consult with cities, but my understanding is you actually try and get funding for and buy and sell and facilitate affordable housing.
I, I need to correct, I am not an advocate. I'm a city staff person.
That's why I'm asking.
I know, and I'm, that's why I'm clarifying it right up the front for everyone.
Right.
We are not an advocate. We have worked with many private sector programs, as well as direct assistance programs. Our job is to administer, research, et cetera, for cities.
Right.
But we do not advocate.
What else do you do?
Hmm?
What else do you do?
What else we do?
Yeah, Arch.
We administer local programs for cities.
Like?
When a city creates an, a, a rule for the private developers, we help to write the development agreements for the affordable units across the street.
Okay.
We help the cities write those regulations, we sit at the staff tables just like, you know, here, but it's for doing it, we help with neighborhood plans, we go to the neighborhood meetings, just like any staff does. We administer programs in behalf of cities, but the cities, they're still city programs. If there's an issue with administering, like if something came up with the building across the street where we're watching the affordability and the rents go too high and we go to them and say the rents are too high and they don't do anything about it, we go to the city attorney and say, city attorney, city, we, we are your staff person, we need to go enforce your agreement. We work, so we work with private sector, we work with nonprofits, but we work it through the lens of doing work in behalf of cities. So, we, we are not an advocate though, I don't, okay, we've been hired by, just like if you had a traffic engineer sitting in front of you tonight from the city, that's what our role is.
Or I'd like to piggyback on that, because our relationship to the city is almost exactly the same as the sheriff's department is. The city has hired us to do this work for you, to be planners, to assist the planners that you have on staff. We advocate for housing in the same way that the sheriff department advocates for public safety.
Right.
But, but we don't...
That's what I've meant when I've said that, and Mike, you've mentioned...
But, but the word advocacy is, when we come into a room, our, I mean, city, if you look at, every city has different approaches to ADUs, they have different approaches to different programs you see here, because our job is to inform and then let it be modified based on local conditions.
And we don't have our own mission, we don't have our own mission statement, we work for the city's mission.
So, I just want that to be clear, is, we are a creation of cities because they wanted to have access to staff expertise to go out and find the right people to talk to and stuff. I would agree that your process used a secondary approach to get input from those that are affected by your program and policies. I don't disagree with that at all. And what we're saying is, and I think that should be noted, that it's based on secondary research, written materials provided to you by, and I would, don't say Arch, say Arch's provided by your staff. Okay, that's the way I would, that's how...
And Arch, I'm going to, I want to refer to Arch.
Okay, that's...
You've done way more of the talking than the staff has in this process, but you made reference to transactions, for example, in Bellevue, you saw the article Carol about how this property, this apartment complex was going to be purchased by a private developer and you stepped, I thought you said, you stepped in and you played a role in getting the city to buy and multiple jurisdictions participated in purchasing that property so they could keep the rents lower, is that right?
There will be funding, but the city stepped, the council stepped in and wanted to do something, then they used us as a resource, and actually in that case, probably less than most projects we work on. But the city council set the direction, we didn't set the direction to go work on that. The council decided to work on it and then we were a resource to them.
Right.
To help.
Get it done.
Think it through.
Think it through.
And then make their decisions, right.
So, anyway, you guys wear a lot of hats, is from what I can tell, so I want to try and get it right, so it'd be helpful if you wrote up exactly what you do.
Right.
If you could be, you know, the more thorough the better.
Your...
So, we could say, what we're trying to write here, here's who we listen to and here's what they do and, and this is the perspective we were getting.
I mean, the council frankly know who Arch is and, and they kind of knew that Arch would be kind of their staff on this project. So, I mean, I don't think we need to explain the role of Arch necessarily. So, if I can just kind of say, what I've heard from this discussion is that, first of all, I would say, if you want the background information, is, is there anything that we need to supplement in what's already been included in the memo for background information? And maybe what I've heard is, is that you want to present this as a menu of options and be clear that if, as this moves forward, the recommendation would be, as any of these are further studied, you would recommend a more, a stronger or a more robust outreach effort. That's what I heard. And if that's correct and that reflects what you think, then we could certainly make those edits to the memo going forward.
That's why at the beginning I made a recommendation that, you know, this is what we've been provided as our kind of working document and it's a draft, we get to go through and, you know, do we, do we agree with basically the flow of information so we can present this menu to council? I get what you've done as well Doug, which I appreciate because it highlights the places in our conversation where we came up against a rough patch because we don't have all the information. And I can see that you want to provide the council with the heads-up, that, you know, these topics are not easy, these are going to have some consequences and maybe unintended consequences, and especially from your legal background, I can see how you think about it from that perspective. There are some things that you've written on here that maybe aren't the full agreement of the, the commission.
And I am open to, as I said in my email, if I misread something, feel free to correct.
So, I think maybe there's two things that maybe I see, I, I appreciate you, you know, kind of listening to our discussion and saying, oh, we can add some of those words to make it tangible for them to hang on to what the thought process we had and, you know, to reflect this conversation so that when the council gets it, they're getting a document that helps them to be able to move forward as well. So, maybe we need to go through, look at this, just add, doesn't, it's not going to take very long. Then I think we need to go through this as a commission and not just say, oh, we'd like to add this.
Oh, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Mike, you had your hand up, I didn't want to ignore you there, if, if and when Carol's done.
Well, I don't want to take time from the work that Carol's talking about, but I will anyway. One other additional point, while I'm looking at the planning commission memo, it just brought back to me, I'm not really comfortable with talking about high priority, low priority because I think that suggests a level of analysis that we didn't really go through. I mean, what we did was, again, using the word intriguing, and this is my interpretation and maybe the beginning of the wordsmithing, what I think we did was we went through a long exhaustive list that Arch provided us of, we call them strategies, and we went through there and say, okay, is this compatible with what we believe to be Kenmore's vision? Does this look something that would be viable for our community? If the answer was yes, it went into this bucket, it was no, it went into another bucket. So, we ended up really with two buckets. And rather than say that they're prioritized, because I don't think, I don't feel comfortable we did enough analysis to distinguish, you know, the top, the nine from the bottom nine or the first from the, so I think maybe talking more in terms of, here's our top tier, here's our second tier, something like that, that just doesn't give a, a false sense of sign up that was applied to this, that really wasn't. And I think that maybe reinforces the earlier point I was trying to make, which is, there needs to be a lot more work done here before I think you get to the point and call these things recommendations or say that this one is higher priority than another, because to me, you set a priority, then you, you're committed to action and I, I'm just afraid when I read this, that's, that's what I hear, so, that's my two cents.
And, and really in our process of prioritizing, we basically just kind of did a closed vote and whichever one won one, which didn't really add any of the caveat items that, you know, because you, you get bogged down, I think we, we did a pretty good job of working with this big matrix and trying to understand what the goals were and to keep moving forward. But I, I think we can do it.
So, thank you, both of you. Go ahead Scott. Couple of comments.
Couple of comments. I like your idea about putting an appendix of examples of implementing these strategies. I think that's a great idea, because it's, you read the bullet points, and it kind of glazes over a little bit, because you can't connect it to an anecdotal situation, and so I think that would be helpful for the council and us, so we know what we're, you know, we're talking about. You know, but, and if we had something like that, that would be really helpful, I would think. And the other thing is, I get what Doug is, different perspectives. I play golf with a guy who goes, finds land, and he, right around here, he does it all the time, and he's always trying to find land to sell it, buy it and sell it, and somebody, developer's going to do it. You know, it would be nice to get a perspective. That's why I like his, some of the comments he's made in his addendum to it, that, you know, we should be listening to those kind of people. What are their needs, and what, you know, what can we get from them, and what can we give them, you know, so they're quid pro quo, so we could, you know, get affordable housing? That's just my thoughts, some thoughts I have.
Thanks. Go ahead, Lori.
So, I'm wondering, sort of back to Carol's concept, attachment B to your materials tonight is that cover memo that was going to go with the matrix, and then, again, separately, we've talked about this appendix that would give, provide more flesh to the bullet points in the strategy. Here's what some of the examples of this might be. Here are pros, here are cons, that we've identified at this point. But I wonder if what you're really talking about is adding a section somewhere in either introduction or background of this memo that talks about, here's how this, here's how this process proceeded. We had this list of strategies that was gleaned, just as Arthur said, where they were all gleaned from. And then, we went through and tried to determine, knowing what we know about our community, whether the strategies seemed intriguing or not. But we certainly didn't go to the point of bringing in other perspectives, or in any way vetting whether this was a good idea, sort of expanding on that concept. We didn't, you know, the planning commission didn't go to that level of detail. We're assuming, and it's critical, that that level of analysis and involvement happened if the council wishes to direct a strategy, for example, to the planning commission.
I like it.
Does that kind of fit with what you're- And I can really see a blending of some of the concerns that you had, that you took the time to write down for us, but, you know, in the local conditions part of the attachment B, there's some things that we could add and wordsmith in there. Why don't we take that-
Yeah, edit their memo with some of this, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and just blend the two and maybe enhance-
Fine.
-the story, so that this isn't just kind of a big, long document, but it actually has something that will hook the council into understanding, you know, what was the process that this commission went through? Because we did some great work, but I think that the way this is presented, it's very dry, and it doesn't have a-
Right.
-an emotional attachment. Not that it's that, but-
I know what you mean.
But a heart, the heartbeat of Kenmore, that's what we're representing.
Okay, and I think it's consistent with what Scott has said and Mike has said. I know there's agreement-
I agree with that.
Over here. Let me pick up on one point Mike made, and he was talking about, we didn't really go to such detail to be able to say, "High, medium, low." We said intriguing, not intriguing. And I got to tell you, we said intriguing to a lot of stuff that we were not sold on, we were just not willing to kill it. But we said not intriguing, when I said not intriguing, he was, "Kill it." He had a huge list. And I think, you've got all this stuff where you didn't kill it. You got watch.
We did.
It's on a watch list.
Yeah.
No, it's not, it's kill, as far as I'm concerned. Let's try and shorten it, at least, by getting rid of the stuff we clearly did not want. You had something in here about, only if it were strongly objected to, did we not include it on the watch list. I'm like, no, if it's not intriguing, I don't want to deal with it. We've already got plenty to deal with. But that's me. Go ahead.
Okay, this is now where I am trying to help cities stay on the upside of the state GMA process, that by putting things and not dropping them, but making it clear they're not in the top half or third or quarter, it at least shows that you acknowledged, and someday, they may be, and that's as much a process to try to back up for cities, to show the range of things that are out there that you may sum, but you've prioritized over. And we think it's a smart, that's why we have tried to do the shorter list of the high priority and the cover memo, but to not lose the long list as part of an overall effort to document under GMA.
You're saying, we'll violate the GMA if we don't include as watch items the stuff we don't want?
I'm not necessarily saying that. I'm saying that it helps communities to have as part of your overall documentation. You can go another route if you want. I'm just saying why we have advised cities to think about, don't drop ideas unless, like, now, it doesn't apply to you, but manufactured housing, parks, preservation in Bellevue, they don't have any. It doesn't make any sense to even think about it ever. Okay? So, that's why. It's not because we were trying to keep forcing them on you, it was because we're trying to keep those as back burner, so that the next time you look, and you see the results of one, and you can show a full range, because what GMA says is to consider a range of strategies that parallel the needs you've identified in your needs analysis. So, you can ignore that, it's just a coaching thing we've given to cities, and if you don't like that idea, then take it out. But we're trying to help you as your planner, who understands GMA to some degree in the area of housing, and that's, and I'll stop there.
Okay. My sense is, you can always revive an idea. Just because we didn't put it on this list, as, I mean, nobody can think about it or talk about it later, and either you or somebody playing in your shoes can always bring it up when this issue goes forward and/or is revisited in a different context.
Or we could make it exhibit why, and it's still there.
And bury it the way it should be buried.
Yeah, because, you know, the only reason I say that is because, you know, something that you could look at.
Yeah.
You're probably, unless you're a real-
Well, to say that the GMA requires us to consider a range of policy options or something, we've done that, with or without the list of, maybe we'll consider it someday in the future, so we're not going to, we got to put it on this extra appendix or something. I'm just trying to simplify it.
Do you mind if I cut off?
Go ahead, I'll follow you.
Oh, I was just going to say, Doug, for the benefit of the council, to whom this will go, if we're going to be conveying to them a list of our most intriguing ideas, I think it's helpful to show what we were evaluating those most intriguing ideas against.
Exactly.
Rather, if, to take this to the extreme, which you're not suggesting, if we were only present to them our highest priority slash most intriguing ideas, I think that does a disservice by not revealing what the broader scope of our discussion is.
I'm fine with that. I just, rather than say, "Watch," just say, "Declined," or something like that. So, I mean, we made that, that was my sense of what it meant. I just read the memo and thought, "No, that's not, intriguing, not intriguing was not, maybe, maybe later." It was, we don't think it fits right now. Go ahead.
Anyway, following on to Mike's idea, which I think is a good one, I'm sure, in terms of meeting the GMA requirements and other, if we're clear that we evaluated based on this set of principles, or this set of criteria, and as a result of that, we came up with this top tier thing, which we're pushing forward, but then, here are the other things that we also looked at that didn't meet the criteria in the same way, and that's why they're in a different tier. So, rather than calling them "watch" or something else, what we do is, we call, these are the ones that didn't meet our criteria, and so we're not identifying those to the city council, because we don't think they meet the criteria, they're not relevant to this time and condition.
I'm fine with that.
Well, there they are. If you want to put them into a footnote, that's fine with me, too.
No, I like appendix Y.
Yeah.
You refer to appendix Y for a fuller list, that's fine with me. But as Mike was saying, it gets you back to something that's solid, that says-
That's fine.
There's criteria there.
Okay. Anybody else? Dennis?
I'm retreating a little bit. Earlier, when we were talking about the role of Arch-
Yeah.
I really think there needs to be a sentence in here or two about their role, but I think you would attach an appendix where you get to fully explain what you do, and I realize that a lot of people are going to understand it, but we had some confusion up here. This won't only be read by the city council, so I think further explanation, whether it's going to your original proposal, or what's in the contract that you have, would be helpful, using that to explain your role.
And I think, actually, that's a very good idea. It doesn't have to be a very long sentence, like another five pages or something like that, but I think it is important. Kenmore is a city that has this one thing about them. We all have the need to know. We might not do anything with the knowledge, but we do have the need to know. So, just being able to build these documents, though we know it's going to the city council, it's a public document, so let's make it user-friendly for the public.
Would that fit into the process section that was talked about?
Yeah.
I mean, that would seem to be the logical-
Yeah, because that really is how Arch helped us, is to help us process information. But I think if there's something in there reminding all of us in the document that that was our purpose, was to process, for instance, the mandates of GMA, and we looked at all those, but we came up with the highest intriguing at this moment in time. I think that's the other thing that we forget, is time is an element in this document, too. And what we really want is for the things that matter most to be highlighted the highest, not maybe with a number like we did, but just so that when we pass this document up to council, it's very clear what we did, why we did it, the process we used, and our conclusion.
Mark.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll go with you next.
I just wanted to make sure that, I like Lori's point about, you know, pointing out that we, you know, we got the information we got, and I think Arthur mentioned secondary sources. I think that would be, you know, a good thing to include, to kind of address your point that, maybe in a different way, that we didn't get necessarily the full breadth and depth of what could possibly be done for affordable housing. And also, I think this, I think said, but just to make clear that we found these intriguing, but we found them intriguing for further exploration, not necessarily intriguing as they're presented here, but they're intriguing to look more closely at. I think that's a distinction that's important, because I think if you say intriguing, well, then there's sort of an implicit endorsement, and I, we're not anywhere close, everybody, I think, agrees, we're not anywhere close to endorsing any particular strategy, so that might be a wordsmithing exercise, but I think that's fine.
Thanks, Mark. Lori, you had your hand up.
I actually had a couple of comments. One, I feel like we need to revisit the question of tiers versus priorities. I heard that from Mike, but it wasn't clear to me whether that was something that everyone wanted to move to. It's not a huge change, but that is a question. And then, the second thing I wanted to point out is that I think we've all agreed, I think I've heard you agree, that the strategies that, at this point, are identified as high, top tier, whatever we want to call them, we all agree that we have not studied them enough to determine whether we can or cannot accept them. We think they may have a place in Kenmore, but we're not sure. If you think about that, for the bottom tier strategies, I think you have to come to the same conclusion. We have not studied them, we have not heard from the public, we have not assessed pros and cons. We're just saying, at this point, we don't want to look at them. But I think that that does lend itself to the notion of keeping them somewhere, because you didn't really analyze them. Right? I mean, if we agree we didn't for the top tier, we certainly didn't for the bottom tier, because those got kicked right out the door.
Yeah, but, yeah, and I generally agree with that. I do want to say, though, there were some proposals that we knew more about than others, and some we talked about at some degree and said, "That's out." So, I don't think it was the same level of dismissiveness with each of them, but I don't mind if you keep it in there and say, you know, "Hasn't been fully explored," although for simplicity, I guess that's probably the way to go. Go ahead, Mike.
I was going to say, I don't entirely agree with what you're saying, because it's not as if we did nothing. You know, we looked at all of these, and there was a clear group of things we looked at and said, in terms of the criteria we're applying, thinking about the date and time and the environment here, we just don't think these are worth putting on a to-do list. Because what I think we're talking about is we're building a future work plan.
Yes.
So, what we've got to do, we've got to decide, we can't put everything on that work plan.
Right.
So, we went through here, and we did some kind of discrimination here to say, "These are just not things I would spend time on right now." Now, you may be right in 20 years, maybe that was a stupid thing to do, and we want to come back and look at it, but for right now, we need a work plan that's probably got no more than, what, three things on it?
We expanded it to four, because we-
Okay. Well, I mean, realistically, the city council, we can't come back and deal more than three things.
I agree. In fact, I was thinking, how can we make it simpler? We had four things we thought were the top priorities, even among the top tier. I'd really like to focus on the four, because we had pretty clear consensus on those.
Yes.
The rest, we could say, you know, these were, you could call it a tier, but I want to, I don't really want to go in any detail there. And then, all the medium stuff, just put it on the appendix same. We looked at it, it didn't really intrigue us, or whatever, however you want to phrase it, but I don't want this to be a long document with all these, with stuff they won't even get to. They're not going to spend, you know, how much time on this? One small part of one meeting, and then decide what to delegate back to it.
But I think if, I think if you express it in a tier, or, I like the menu item, that we tiered the menu items, because what it does is it demonstrates that we did put weight or value on the ones that we are in the top tier. It doesn't mean that they are the definitive, without more research, that is the thing we should be doing, but that's not our job. Our job is just to pass the idea up as a menu item and say, "These are the ones that came to the top."
Right. Go ahead, Scott.
Like Mike said, I think we've got to talk about the process from, where do we go from here? And that shows what we didn't do by just saying that, you know? I presume you've got an idea of how to vet all these ideas out.
Yeah.
To be honest, I'm a lot more comfortable working on individual activities than trying to do herding of cats, which is what we're all trying to do here, which is taking lots of different ideas, with lots of different opinions, and trying, that's a lot harder to do than taking one issue, bringing in the experts on that issue, hearing the community, and just helping you guys all pull it together. This is, you're not the only ones who are having lots of conversations trying to figure out how, Holo took six months before they did anything, before they had any, and finally someone came in and said, "This is what you're going to do." Okay? That's what it took to finally get them past the kind of conversations you're having. And I have to leave, because I have to go to another city who is dealing with a growth hearing board issue, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions to sort of help frame and see if I'm hearing things, so that when we all go back and take stuff. First, I want to ask, in the chart, you mentioned the watch, and I must admit, in all the other plans we've worked with, it's low. We don't use the word "watch," we use the word "low." Now, and what that got me remembering is, we added this attachment B, which evolved from this watch concept to a monitoring concept. And so, a question I want to pose is, did this feel okay to you as something, because you said, "Let's just throw it away," and that reminded me, under the county-wide planning policies, there's this four-step process of come up with a policy, do what we're doing now, start implementing some of them, and then reevaluate. And so, one reason for keeping all that stuff somewhere is so when you go to that revisit in five years, you pull that back up. But I'm wondering, for presentation, if, I love the tier idea, because I think it does demonstrate kind of where you're at better than, I think it's a great idea, but if this works for you, then switching the watches to low in this backup appendix, I think is more along the lines of representing kind of where you guys are on those things. But- the lines of representing kind of where you guys are on those things. But then, but then this, then we get this right, this part. Because I thought this was what we talked about at the last meeting, and I just want to make sure this was sort of the, this is in the cover memo. The attachment B, at the very end, we sort of said, after we talked about the priorities, ideas, the top priority, we then gave a little text about monitoring strategies, because that's part of what we're all supposed to do. And we grouped the monitoring into three categories. We talked about this with you at the last meeting. And so I think, given the conversation in the last 10 minutes, I want to make sure that in going in the direction you want to go there, that then I want to make sure this is making sense. So I'm getting my text messages on the other meetings, so that's.
That's fine.
So.
I'm, I'm not, you're waving something around. It's Exhibit B or something?
It's, it's the end of Attachment B.
It looks like this.
It's part of what was emailed out.
Like this.
It's the last page of the attachment that we drafted that was.
Exhibit B, page nine.
And it had about a short paragraph explanation of what it.
Oh, I see it.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, you were saying you want to keep the, I'm sorry.
Right. What I'm saying is, is that we did the watch about two meetings ago. After thinking about it, we came to you at the last meeting and said, oh, maybe a better way to talk about those items is through this idea of monitoring and grouping them into different levels of mon, different types of monitoring. And if that works for you and reflects those conversations well, then a good complementary move to make is to change these watches to low. And then that gets at the issues you were just talking about.
Hearing.
Mike, what's the relationship between what you're saying about changing watch to low and monitoring? Why are we talking about those two things at the same time? Is it because of potential confusion between watching something and monitoring something?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's partially for that, and I'm realizing we've had five or six meetings, and different documents came up with certain terminology at certain points. And so the most recent evolution of those items was this monitoring approach. And then that now gives different context to how we would represent in the graphic to sort of reflect this prior, this tiering process.
I, I would agree that monitoring is essential, because we're, we're taking a snapshot in time, and this is a strategy that will, will be quite a lot longer than that, right? So we do have to keep an eye on many of the things that are called out here. I am curious, and maybe we should even call out, if, I may not have read the paragraph introducing it carefully enough to know if this is said, but is that something the city is equipped to do, or is that something we'll have to continue to rely on Arch support for this monitoring effort, to pull in the data, make it presentable, and then have some cadence for reporting that back to council and say, you know, these are the trend lines we're tracking in King, East King County. Here's where we are June 2017, January 2018, right? What's our cadence? What's our communication strategy around that? And then how do we, as a planning commission or city council, then, it's great to monitor things, right? But we have to have some kind of idea of, so how do we react to that? We just saw that demand increased or supply decreased, or, right? So.
So what, right. So a little more education about Arch. Every year, we take a work program that the councils actually approve. Our work program is approved by the councils, okay? So one of the things we do is administer programs, and that's in our work program. Kenmore, you get to, we're going to administer these land use programs you have. On the monitoring, we, we have historically collected data, because if we're collecting it for one city, it's easy to collect for all. So we try to get the cities together and figure out what data is most helpful to them for us to collect. What this is going to do is help guide us thinking about, between cities and Arch as housing staff to cities. If there is over, if a lot of cities see lists like this and say they want some of these, it will become part of Arch's work program to do that in four cities. Some of it cities may do, but that's part of what we have to figure out. And that's why, in putting this together this way, it was a way to clearly say, hey, think about, these are important things to see if you can figure out how to monitor. Because cities historically haven't done that, and it's hit or miss. And so this is a way for us to be a little more organized about that work, so it's not so hit and miss, which is what kind of attracted me to it. Because I get calls all the time, all over the place. It'd be so much easier for all of us if people could say upfront, this is the kind of data that would really be helpful for us to keep track of.
Absolutely. And to your point, Doug, we're looking at 2013 housing supply and cost data now, right? And certainly new information will become available, it's just a matter of when. And I'd love to see where that lives.
I know. And I've looked at B, and I'm fine with it as a monitor thing. These, these are the kind of things I think that justify that.
Right, okay. So then I would suggest.
So we can call the others low?
That's what I, right, that's what I'm suggesting you consider, and if that's what works for you guys, and that's, right.
Because I think it makes it simpler for the council.
That's right.
Yeah.
But at the, at the moment, this fit your categorizations. Now we're modifying it to make it so it can move on.
Okay. Debbie?
Good. So I guess what I'm hearing right now is the changes that you're suggesting are basically putting a little bit more in the process, showing, showing your work about what it is that you did, the limitations of what you did, recommendations for next steps, having the appendix. So to me, what I've heard is it's not necessarily a huge change on what you've already come up with. It's sort of repackaging it in a way that's clearer to show your work overall.
Right.
That being said.
And its limitations.
And its limitations, exactly. We could work on bringing this back to you, a revised version, a cleaner version, on December 20th, as I'm looking at these two guys, if that's feasible. If not, it would be January.
Not feasible.
January 3rd.
All honesty, one of the challenges we have is the incredibly quick turnaround, and we have 10 other, we have three other strategy plans.
I'm not fighting you. I just, I just saw you shaking your head. That's why I said it.
So I appreciate you noticing that. I mean, what I, and that's, I think what I'm getting here is that I, I think that us taking the time, these conversations have been helpful. Every time we have these, it helps us move the thing forward. And I think that the limitations, I think that's the word I want to emphasize, it doesn't make the product less, it just clarifies what the product is. And you may feel that way, but.
I'm just saying, you could, you could look at it two ways, but go ahead. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, or how you're comfortable.
The product is less.
How you're comfortable representing what you've done, and what, if anything happens, then any of these ideas to move forward. And that tiering helps to set the tone better of what this is, given what. Because, I'll be honest with you, to get the level of detail, if you were to treat all these strategies equally, in other words, you have a few you like and you want to go those full, then it's not fair to do the other ones to the full extent. And with the size of your city and the resources you have, it took Hala a year and a half. And, but they came in, they already knew what they wanted to do.
When they formed Hala?
The staff and the executive already knew what they wanted to do.
What was the point?
To get the buy-in because of how hard it would be to get there.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I mean, it's a very.
Candor's welcome here. All right, you got to go. I can tell. You're just fidgeting, so feel free.
Well, no, I'm just, well, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Debbie.
Well, we're just trying to, I'm just trying to quickly figure out some logistics here about when to bring this back to you and what that means. So if December 20th is off, then you would, you would have nothing else on the work program to bring, bring back to you. So that could be a night off.
I don't mind, but I'm just thinking.
Because I think we've heard that it's not.
Mike's dying here.
It's not, it's not feasible to bring it back on the 20th. So the next, the next option then for the planning commission would be January 3rd. I'm getting more of a, we might be able to, to make that meeting. Otherwise, it would be the next planning commission meeting, which I'm not sure when that would be. And here's the reason why. Because on the 17th, the 16th is.
Senate's day.
Yes. And so that's a regular council meeting. If council don't cancel that meeting, it will roll to the 17th, which means.
January, and that's him, okay.
In January, yes. So again, we can either try and hit January 3rd to bring back a clean version based on the comments that we've heard tonight, or we would have to, if council takes the 17th, we'd have to maybe come up with a, a special meeting.
Yeah, we could do a special. But I'm thinking, and I'm not saying we have to meet on the 20th or any particular date, but even without Arthur, couldn't you provide us with something before the end of the year, and we could look at it, and then we'd be ready to approve or not approve or amend it?
Well, I, I think what we heard is that these turnarounds, as you can imagine, are very tight. So today is the 6th. This would give them a week with their other responsibilities to get the material ready. Not enough time. So if we were to aim for the January 3rd meeting, presumably the packet would come out a week beforehand, so that weekend between Christmas and New Year's, the packet would come out, and then you would meet on the 3rd, if that is a time, for example, if we knew we didn't have a quorum on the 3rd, then we'd be looking at a special meeting.
Okay.
If the council takes the 17th, which is your other regularly scheduled meeting in January.
So we need to poll on who can be here on the 3rd, right?
I, I think so. Or we can decide that if we're not meeting on the 3rd, we could do it the, whatever that next week is.
10th?
10th.
The 10th? Without knowing right now if there's any other meetings scheduled in, in this room. But I think we'd just like to try and get a range of options right now.
Mike? Here on the 3rd. Dennis?
That's fine.
Mark?
I'll be.
Scott?
3rd is good.
Mike?
Carol?
Ready to roll.
I think I'm back in town then, too. And then, okay, go ahead. I don't want to.
No, I think we can, we can try and.
Let me, let me get to one more thing. So I, I had my list of things, and I think, I would break it into three parts. There was the context, you know, Carol pointed out the first three paragraphs, and then a little lower, there was, okay, where's Kenmore fit into this? So there's, we want that context for those. There's all that stuff about Arch, what I think could be phrased differently, as we've talked about it, in the context of limits and what our process was. I'm fine with that. And then finally, I put in, and this, this, hard for me to know how much endorsement there was among council, because we didn't vote on it. We talked about it a lot, and I talked about it because, for two reasons. One, I have a degree in economics, so I look at it from an economics perspective. So I, I put a lot of economics in there. But I, my sense was that there was agreement on, yes, the supply, the demand, the incentives, the private sector, efficiencies, those were, so I didn't poll everybody, but I put it in there so we could talk about it. Is there agreement on that? Should, I would like to see sort of the economics element of that in there, too, because it's an economic issue.
It definitely is.
And I think there's, there is widespread agreement from both in the housing industry and economists. And what I've said there, and I tried to be pretty general, is in fact what's taking place. Those are the sources of the problems, the job growth, the demand, the value of land, the limited supply. That's what we're dealing with. And so the question is, because that's the problem, that helps explain why we chose the three or four top priorities that we did. So I'd thrown that out there so that you guys don't feel like you didn't have a voice on that. But that was my sense of how the, our discussions went.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it reflects what our discussion, our, our decisions were influenced by what you said.
Dennis, I could tell you in a thought or two. Oh, no, I, I'm really agreeing with you. I come from that background as well, so.
That's why I like you so much.
So could I just clarify, Doug? You're talking about like 12 and 13.
Well, 1, 3, 3, actually, addressed that to some extent. But you're right. I've talked about, let me look at these. Right, 12. That was something I brought up in a meeting. I think it might have been the last meeting.
I mean.
Right, 13.
Does it, and we could, couldn't we just, in the local conditions section that is already part of the men, men, memo, couldn't we incorporate some of this economic indicators to?
Yeah, the principles, really.
Yeah. And I, I mean, all you have to do is drive down I-5 and look at the cranes over Seattle, which we know.
Can we get that in the appendix, picture of the cranes?
Cranes.
Scott wants it to.
We want to see, we want to see cranes like that in Kenmore.
We want anecdotes. We want to bring it alive here. But, and then finally, 16, actually, I brought up early on, I thought there was a fair amount of agreement on that. And that's the relationship between transportation and affordable housing. It was interesting, because, and I didn't think there was objection to that. I'd like to have it in there, and I'd make it clear here, it's not even in the scope of what we're doing exactly. But I think it's worth mentioning. It's a part of this, a big part of this issue.
Absolutely.
And in fact, I saw in the Seattle Times, a letter to the editor written by the chief economist for Zillow. I guess, I don't know if you know what Zillow is.
Yes.
It's a website that evaluates the value of real estate.
Yeah.
And that, the chief economist for Zillow said, and he was talking about ST3, look, this is a big part of affordable housing, and people out there should realize that it's not just about moving, you know, traffic on the freeway. It's about giving people a chance to go from affordable housing to their jobs.
But it also changes everything with real estate, because.
Yeah, when you have a place next to a transit station.
I know. You look at the, the collective bargaining that homeowners are doing just off the 145th station, and there's several homeowners who have these little crackerbox houses.
Yeah.
And they're going together to potential developers and getting way above market value.
It's happening in every city where they've.
But you can see why they can do it.
Right. So anyway, it's only a paragraph, but I think.
I, I think.
But in there, but it, and I thought there was agreement on that. So.
So what I heard is 1, 2, 3, 12, 13, and 16 in some form in the memo that addresses these other.
Economics?
Economic factors.
1, 2, 3, 12, 13, yes.
13 and 16.
Right.
And some may fit in the box, as Carol mentioned, and others may need to have more of a paragraph descriptor.
Yeah, just to pull that idea.
Right. And then some of these are factual.
Right.
Some of them are discussions, so.
Right. So some in the box and some in a paragraph.
But again, it gives context for the decision-making that we did, so that when they get this packet, they don't have to rethink this. They can just go, oh, yes, 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 yes.
Okay. Good. Anybody else? All right. Staff? Mike? Mike, you going to be here January 3rd?
Yes.
Can you wear something like an Asana?
[laughing]
You look like Santa.
[laughing]
Just hoping maybe you could play it up a little bit.
My beard was a little long.
You know, you got, you got a month. Make it work, right? All right.
I've got a red hat for you.
All right. January 3rd. Does that satisfy the agenda tonight? Go ahead.
Could we have an, go ahead.
I was going to say, we probably need an official motion to cancel the meeting, as long as we have you all here.
The December 20 meeting, okay.
The December 20 meeting, that would be helpful.
All right. Do I hear a motion to cancel the December 20 meeting?
Certainly.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay, and raise your hand. All abstaining, say abstain, raise your hand. There being none, motion carries.
Thank you.
And it is, meeting is canceled. Is there anything else? Staff, commissioners, new business, none. Thereby, this meeting is adjourned. Okay?
All right. See you all next year.